Let's get started. I'll officially call our meeting to order and we'll reflect that all of the board members are here, as well as a number of staff members, including our great town attorney, Mr. Richard Horwess. I'll entertain a motion of approval for the March 26th meeting minutes.
I'll move.
It's been moved.
I'll sign it.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? I will say that I was not at that meeting, but have reviewed the minutes and am prepared to vote for them. So seeing no further comments, the minutes will stand approved by the entire board. Monthly reports, all the monthly reports are due actually, Mr. Costello, thank you, are actually due tomorrow, so Mr. Costello is ahead of time.
You know once.
And I think there's only one or two, one or two that are outstanding, and I'm sure the rest of those will be in by end of day tomorrow. We have no public hearings, and we have several guests this evening. I'm going to start with Mr. Costello. If you would do the intros of our first guest.
Thank you.
And then we'll get to our second guest after that.
Sounds good. With us tonight, we have Tracy Boychuk. Tracy contacted me a while back. She's interested in opening up a graphic arts or graphic design studio. I'm going to let you talk about that in a minute, but this is the property that was previously the Incognito Tux Shop on 2108 Five Mile Line Road. And Tracy, what would you like to do?
Well, I'll be offering graphic design services, as well as a wide format. I specialize in wide format printing. I've been doing this for about 14 years now. The company that I was with, we're dividing into two companies, and I'm basically taking over the production end of it and starting on my own. And I'm really excited. I've been not sleeping waiting for this meeting.
I have that feeling almost every day myself.
That's right.
But I am a professional, and I do think that the location is a great location for what I have to offer, and I think it will benefit just the community, the Penfield community and the surrounding communities. A service that I think can be used in our community. And I also live in Penfield, so I'm all for it.
Can you tell the board a little bit about the workings of the business, hours of operation, number of employees? I know you wrote it all down for us.
Yep. Hours of operation will be standard nine to five, Monday through Friday. And Saturdays, I'll probably work a shorter day, 10 to four. And I'm not going to open on Sundays. I'm going to do a day off to hang out with that little dude over there.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
He gets a day.
He gets a day.
As far as employees, right now, I'm going to be running it solely, and I'm sure I'll look into hiring a helper. But I think for the beginning, the transition stages, I'm going to keep doing what I do, and I'm doing it on my own now. I just have someone there to order things if I need to be ordered. So for now, it'll be just myself.
So will it be open to the public, so to speak, where you'll have, you know, people can walk in if they have printing needs, or is it more just?
Yep, no, most definitely. We have very few walk-ins where we are now, because we're in a disclosed sort of area. So, you know, my vision, that first room that you walk in is going to be the welcoming room, where my desk will be set up, and anyone can walk in, ask what I do, and they can see what's being done. So it is welcome for walk-ins. But I do have a client base that's been with the company, yeah, over 20 years.
How many visitors a day would you anticipate, just knowing your past history?
We very rarely, more than five, come either to pick up a job. There's never been more than three people maybe in there at once. I do suspect that maybe in the summer, with the foot traffic in the Village, curiosity, people will probably come in more.
And you and I have been working on your sign. You're going to have a sign designed, prepared for the board to review and approve.
I will. For the time being, because being a designer and everything, in my eyes has to be perfect, I'm going to hold off on the exterior signage until I know what direction I'd like to go with that. And for the time being, I will hang an interior sign in the front window and leave it at that for the beginning.
Okay.
Exterior signage is pretty important, so.
So give us kind of a quick free plug, like 30 seconds. What do you do for whom? Is it banner printing, or is it bulk printing, like flyers and things like that?
It's not flyers. It's wide format, so it's typically banners, posters mounted to foam core.
Mapping.
Banner stands. I do vinyl graphics, cut vinyl that can be applied on windows, cars. I do stuff like make the A-frames that you see outside of the shops in the Village. Coroplast signs. I do some outdoor signage, but, you know, the digital printing end of the outdoor signage, I don't really get into the carved signs or anything like that.
Tracy, with that sign up there, do you do anything like that?
Well, I do print stuff that big. That's as big as I can print. And we can print on canvas, so something like that, yes and no. I don't frame, I don't do framing.
It's more the technical end of the whole process.
Yeah, I source, a lot of the finishing work will get sourced out. I just mainly print wide format and offer design services.
So it sounds like you wouldn't have a lot of business refuse, as far as like the need for a large dumpster, or, you know, just whatever's there is suitable for you now?
Yeah, I think Olga said she was-
I'm looking into getting a dumpster for the whole building.
Okay.
But they're very expensive right now.
So a shared use enclosed dumpster?
Yes.
So I would, the only thing I would say, Mrs. Boychuk, just, you know, make sure that you work with Jim. I know you and Jim have got a great working relationship, so just work with Jim as to what that might look like, placement, all of those types of things.
Well, isn't the town planning to enclose the dumpsters?
We're working on, we've got that in the works right now. I can't tell you that that's going to be completed in the next, you know, few weeks or a month or so, but our ultimate goal is to get that taken care of. So that's why I would say work with Jim and go from there. And I would guess, Tracy, that you probably have some materials that are recyclable.
I do, and I really plan on utilizing scrap material and just in trying to donate it to schools or utilize, you know, even if I just put a sign out that said, "I have scrap foam core," you know, "Come, come check it out."
Sure.
In terms or another, I really try to save my materials and not have to throw things out.
Okay.
Now, there are presently two doors, one on the side off Five Mile and then one off Penfield Road. Are you going to be using both entrances?
I'll be using, the front entrance will be for customers, and the side entrance will be for deliveries. When I order rolls of material, they'll come in the side door.
Okay. And then are you going to be doing any other interior renovations, any structural changes for equipment, get equipment in?
No, there was like a small wall that we were going to just take down a little bit to make room for one of my bigger tables, but I've measured everything, and other than that, I don't have to do anything in there.
Well, speaking of the entrances, we always had a handrail similar to the one on the side of the building. And is that handrail sufficient?
We'll have to talk to the building inspectors about that. If it's there right now, I'm sure it is. But if it's there now, I'm sure it's okay. It's a pre-existing.
Well, no, unfortunately, the previous tenant took it and demolished it someplace. And I had a friend of mine, John Ferrari, give me an estimate on putting the same rail there. And instead, he made a mistake and put a, you can describe it better because you saw it.
It's kind of like raw piping.
I'm aware of it, and I met with the building inspector yesterday about it. He went out and visited the site, and he had no problem with it. It meets the state requirement.
We don't like it.
Well, you can change it if you'd like. Just work with the building inspector to make sure it meets state standards for accessibility.
Can we change it back to what the original?
I'd say talk to Mr. Tat, and he'll work through the process with you. You'll have to come and visit the site soon anyway, so he'll do that before he comes in.
Okay. Board, other questions, other comments for Tracy or Mrs. Boychuk?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Please, it didn't stay vacant for too long.
Well, it's interesting. In the beginning, it was in such horrible, horrible condition that people were stashed away from it. The town was horrified when they came in and saw the condition of it. Since I've had it remodeled in the condition that it is now with new floors, new ceilings, new, everything is the way it was in 1985. I've had quite a few people who are quite interested. Even today, I had an insurance agent call, and he is very interested. And I said, "We have two already in the area," and he said, "He's a farm agent."
Yep. Farmers.
We think you made the right choice.
Farmers.
We don't need to look any further. You made the right choice.
I said, "I have a client that's very, very interested, and if she doesn't take it," he said, "I would like to take it."
Okay.
And so I've had quite a few interested people since it was cleaned up and in good condition. And I'd like to invite people right here to come and look at it now.
We will make it a point of doing that. I think a number of us try to, as new businesses come in and open up, we always like to try to stick our head in and welcome and say hello and what have you. So we certainly will do that, Mrs. Boychuk.
Good.
All right, good. Then seeing no other questions, then we'll ask Jim if you will prepare a letter, send to Tracy with the standard information in there. Certainly, if there is any remodeling that requires permits, you know, having it inspected by the fire marshal at some point when she's ready to put up her sign to work with yourself. And then I would also encourage, you know, working with, you know, from a refuse or garbage collection that, you know, work with Mrs. Boychuk on that.
Hopefully, that'll be temporary, but this will be a special permit you're being issued. So you'll be getting a resolution in the mail, and I'll work with you to get it all squared away.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good luck with the new business.
Thank you.
Thank you for choosing Penfield, and we appreciate it. And Mrs. Boychuk, thank you for getting your building all cleaned up, and it looks like you've got a great tenant.
I do.
Okay.
I do. And she's my neighbor across the street.
That's even better, right?
When I called and she answered, I said, "I'm sorry, I think I have the wrong number because I know my voice." And I was like, "I'm just calling about, you know, the space for rent in the Village of Penfield." And she's like, "No, this is the right number." And I said, "Is this Olga?"
She just yelled out your front door.
I know.
There you go.
The kids on the street.
Okay, well, good luck.
It's interesting because Tracy remodeled the house across the street and did beautiful work in gardening and everything.
Ripping it all out.
I know she'll do a great job at the four corners.
Excellent.
Well, welcome.
Well, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Boychuk. Tracy, thank you very much. And to the dude as well. All right. Okay, we're all set. Thank you very much. And then just stay in contact with Jim.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Do you want us to leave these for the next?
If you, feel free to take them. If you'd like a copy, we do have extras. Okay?
Mail them.
All right. And so as Tracy and her team are exiting, I would ask Dr. Renee if she would come forward, please.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I'm ordering a table.
Okay, so welcome. And if, as you heard Mr. Costello indicate on the previous visitor, if you just kind of give an overview, we do have your write-up that you provided. Thank you very much.
Oh, no.
But if you would just give an overview of what you're looking to do and location, former Dr. Herman's property, but give us a little overview of your business. And again, welcome.
Thank you. I've been in Orthodontist. I worked with Dr. Bradley Kaufman over in Brighton-Henry at Area for four years, and I've been in contact with Dr. Herman for a while, and he agreed to sell his practice to me. He's staying on for a six-month transition, so he will be here until September until Babe Number Two comes for fruition. And basically, it's the same location, same house. Dr. Mike Pignato owns the building. I do have a sign made, but was working on some minor details, so I'm meeting, yeah. I was just working with coloring and font and stuff, but that's the generalized sign that I'm going to be having made. I just didn't have the minor details, so I couldn't make the historical meeting. So I'll be meeting with them in May, and then once the sign's approved, I'll be having the sign redone. As for remodeling, I'm currently in the process of purchasing a new panoramic, digital panoramic machine for digital x-rays. I'm installing new computers just to make things more digital and a little bit more up to date with how, you know, I'm doing, but no structural changes at this point. So chairs, walls, pretty much decor, everything like that is pretty much staying the same.
Are you taking on Dr. Herman's staff as well?
They are all agreed to stay, so all four of them.
So you have any more than them, or just the kind of?
If my practice grows, yeah. I would hope to, they're three full-time, one is part-time. So if practice grows, the part-time employee would agree to work full-time or open Monday through Thursday, eight to five, which is pretty much consistent with Dr. Herman's hours. And if it grows, I'm great, you know. I'd love to hire more people, but for right now, that's good.
And I'm sure Dr. Herman and Dr. Pignato made you aware of the fact that there's cross parking, cross-access agreements on the property, so you're sure you're part of everybody else.
Yes, I have spoken with Dr. Pignato about purchasing the building, but I opted to lease for the time being, just with everything that's going on. But yeah, we have talked about a variety of that stuff. Thank you.
We're talking about dumpsters. Is there a shared dumpster from those properties?
Yes.
There, well, actually, Dr. Pignato is in the process this week of installing a new dumpster pad. He's got the pad in place. He's putting new fencing around it to buffer it from the neighbors. And I'm not certain, I can't remember if there's one on your property.
We shared the one with Dr. Merkley.
That's right.
So it's the same dumpster for Merkley and yourself, but not Five Mile Line Road Cafe?
Yeah, I believe it is.
I think it is.
Okay, so there's Five Mile Line Cafe as well.
That's what generated the thought process for installing one in the back.
All the Pignato properties, so to speak.
Right. So they'll be in good shape probably in the next couple of weeks.
Very good. No, it sounds great. Sounds really easy, too, just transitioning over.
Yeah.
Good luck with all that.
Thank you very much.
Always got a big client base.
Yes.
Cook your tea.
Doctor, when are you, when is your plan to open up?
Actually, I had no idea I had a tenant's meeting, so we closed March 14th, and I owned it as of last week Monday.
Okay, so as of Monday.
So I apologize for that, but yeah.
Well, that's what the streamlining process is for.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it certainly fits in very much with the streamlining process of same type of operation.
Yeah.
Encourage to, you know, meet people through efficiently.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay. Jim will prepare a letter. It'll be an approval letter for a special permit, and it'll have the usual, you know, the sign, you know, getting a sign permit, and if you're doing any remodeling, which it sounds like you're not, other than just doing up some upgrade of equipment, computers and things like that. And I would just encourage you to just work with Mr. Costello, especially on the sign itself, and get that all squared away. All right. Board, anything else for the doctor or for Mr. Costello?
No.
All right. Great, welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm a baby.
All right, you too. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to lawn finance action items. First item is Panera Bread. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. At their last meeting, we had discussed the Panera Bread application. It was just two weeks ago, I assume it was yesterday. But in any event, since that point in time, as you know, Mr. Benway and myself had some concerns really related to the internal flow of traffic throughout the project. Supervisor and Mr. Benway and myself met with Adam last Friday. We came to consensus as to how we should try to get to provide safer access to the parking area, and took our comments to heart, went back, and we drew a plan to accommodate our needs. We sent that plan to Jeff and I late this afternoon. I met with Jeff. See, and I both agree that it's exactly what we're looking for in terms of safety issues. So our recommendation to you is the plan that he's proposing this evening, be the plan that we would support or agree with.
Can you just highlight for us just what changes we made and what we saw before, just to kind of bring us up to speed as to what's more in this plan?
Yep. Well, I have the other layout on the other side of the board if you want to see that, too. The other layout, the initial layout, had the drive-through coming in this way and looping around the building in sort of a J shape. And it had some parking here that was isolated, and also had a dead end, so it didn't provide any kind of circulation. That was one of the concerns that Mr. Costello and Mr. Benway, excuse me, had, as well as Supervisor on that. We also had parking along the shared access drive. That was another concern. Mr. Benway had a concern about the dead-end traffic here, but the idea through our coordination discussion that this shared access, this drive would then be extended via shared access, thereby eliminating that dead-end concern. Some of the items that have changed, we have straightened out the drive-through. We still maintain an isolated drive-through stack for the Panera operations. The dumpster enclosure used to be right in this corner. We have slid it over here.
On 250, is it?
No, 250 is over here.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's dramatic. Now, Jim was talking about putting it up towards?
Well, we looked at that as an option. Actually, I went out and looked at it after I'd met with you, and he was right. I mean, the grade there, there is a change in grade, but you could still actually see it as you drove by. If you're looking for it, you could see it. I think what he's done is, he's actually been able to create more controlled parking in that situation.
So now it's beyond the parking lot?
It's in the back corner of the parking lot.
But it's enclosed?
It's still enclosed, still the same.
Do you have landscaping around it?
There will be. We haven't reworked this yet. We wanted to make sure we have the boards buying before we take that next step.
Okay.
Other changes, we've gone to a nine-by-18 size parking stall, so we'll need a waiver from the town board because the standard is nine-by-20. And that helped us maintain the same number of parking spaces within this configuration for the site. Another change was that we shifted the building towards 250, as suggested by the town. That eliminated the parking along this area here. The patio and main entrance are still facing around 250.
That's good for visibility.
That's the best side of our building, these two sides here. The ADA parking is still on the south side. We're still maintaining a cross-access for pedestrians through the parking lot via a striped area here that's five feet wide and a six-foot wide sidewalk. We have eliminated the parking along the shared access aisle, and we have also eliminated the 12 shared spaces on the off-site development. So all told, the main access points are still the same. We still provide a cross-access. We still maintain the same amount of parking spaces that Panera deems appropriate, which is 58. We still maintain the desired number of stacked cars in the stack that's, again, isolated for many kind of cross-access. We still maintain the location of the desired, the desired location of the main board for Panera operations.
Definitely looks like an improvement, as far as the flow, the safety, public safety access in terms of emergency access.
Yeah, I think that, I think it's considerably better than what we saw the other day. And, you know, my first impression is it's much more structured versus the one that we saw, the last version that we saw that seemed like there could be a lot of zig and zagging and people going in different directions. Absolutely.
We didn't support that one.
Yeah, and so.
This was an after discussion between Mr. Costello, Benway, Supervisor, the fountain, and the developer. This is what we came up with to meet the goals of the town, as well as meet the other.
And we really like it because it's got a two-way traffic, parallel Route 250, which as the other properties develop, will continue that on entire, we gather, which will give them an out if they need it, so.
And there's still a sidewalk. We discussed moving the sidewalk down here. This point for grading is very tight, so we're asked that we maintain this alignment to the sidewalk. We may put in some railing here as it so drops off. But what this does is actually allows for the continuation of that sidewalk through the future development, because as you look down from 250 to the site, it's a bit, you know, a bit of a drop until you get back up the hill on the other side of the park.
And the PRC did look at the possibility of putting sidewalks down there. We agreed with you, the grade change is a little tight. The other part of that is we want to get some green space along there, because the sidewalk is along the other side of the road. There was just not enough green in there to make it look nice, so I think this is a much better improvement.
I think as Adam mentioned, you know, the discussion was move the building up a little bit. So if you take a look at the Jeremiah building, the Panera building, they'll be pretty, you know, pretty much on that same plane overall. And as he indicated, the, you know, the importance of that westly face and the southerly face being, you know, the two key components of that Panera statement or signage.
Adam did send in a revised exterior lighting plan for both the Jeremias and this site. I sent that off to you.
You did.
Not this site, Jim.
Oh, it was Jeremias.
It was only Jeremias.
I think we're looking for uniform lighting.
Yes, we haven't reworked the lighting for this one. The new lighting will be, the new lighting for this will reflect the amended lighting for Jeremias.
The same, consistent, word with things. Same lighting structure.
And I've got Tony, that Tony had asked that I would talk to A.J. Husky about lighting, you know, the lighting plan. That's his business, so he's doing that for me right now. Shoebox lighting, I'm sure it's going to be fun.
Is this the last thing?
Pretty much. I mean, as he says, we'll be working on the final landscaping plan to, you know, to show you what you want to do once he gets a chance to fit everything back together. But I think we're pretty happy with what he's come up with, isn't it?
What more do we need before we do a resolution?
Just not much. I mean, if you want to direct me to do the resolution, everything else will be conditions of approval that he has to comply.
What about the signage issue? They're asking for more signage than?
If you feel comfortable granting more signage, you can do that. If you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to.
It should be consistent.
What was the result with Jeremias?
Right.
Jeremias right now is only asking for a sign, they're asking for two signs. They're asking for a sign because their entrance, or their entrance to their buildings is the interior.
Yeah.
So they're going to have a sign over there saying Jeremias, but I think they're going to have a freestanding sign attached to the wall that will say Jeremias to go see through the street.
On the 250. So that wouldn't be that different than what they're asking, because they're asking for a two-sided, one on, right?
I thought it was three, wasn't it?
I don't have the signed package here in front of me, but I know these are their two fronts that they're asking for signage on. And then we discussed the directory side.
And one of the conditions would be that you review the signed package to ensure that it's what we can.
We can move forward without the final detail of the signage.
Absolutely. Those will be conditions of approval. I'll just bring back to you to sign off for you, Jeff.
Otherwise, we doubt everything, right, as far as the? Otherwise, we doubt everything, right, though, as far as the landscaping? He's going to go back and talk to our landscaping architect?
He is, and also they've agreed to, and I also requested as in the resolution that they look at working with us and the neighbors. We're especially concerned for getting some shade in. Just for the Board's information, I did receive information the other night indicating that there's interest in putting a medical office in for the back there, which will require additional landscaping as well.
It was time well spent. Well, it's time well spent.
So, Board, if you're comfortable, then we would direct Mr. Costello to prepare a draft resolution for us to take a look at. If the Board is comfortable, then that draft resolution will be placed on the February, April, April. I want to revert back to winter because I didn't know enough of it, I apologize. The April 23 Town Board meeting, so Mr. Costello would take the next ten days or so, draft up, let us take a look at it, we'll provide feedback, and then place it on the agenda for the 23rd. Okay, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Jim, anything else the Board should be aware of on this item?
No, I'll start formulating that resolution and get to you, and if you have any questions, please let me know. We'll modify to address the concerns.
I just wanted to bring up quickly, I had mentioned in a prior meeting, you know, noise mitigation, we, I think, addressed that, but just to make sure that you include that as far as conditions.
Yes, when we resubmit, we'll formally document how, you know, for instance, the speakers are controlled inside and the configuration for the outdoor music.
We actually went to the site in Perrinton two Fridays ago to look at noise issues, to look at traffic flows, that type of thing, and actually, we were waiting to hear responses from the, from the inside, couldn't hear anything.
And I was there, what, a half an hour after you guys were testing the drive-through?
Yeah.
I was hungry, but I was testing the...
Everybody had different motives.
The speaker is quite, quite quiet.
Yeah, it is.
And directed on an angle.
We couldn't hear it off-site, so it should be...
But just to make sure that that's covered by the President.
Yep, no, that's a good point, Paul, thank you. Okay, anything else from the applicant's side, Adam, that you believe needs to be put on the table that we haven't already discussed?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right, then we'll look forward to getting a draft resolution for the April 23 meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, we appreciate it, thanks.
No problem.
Okay, we'll now move on to South Point Main Expansion, that's our action item number two, final scoping outline determination, and we'll open that up. I'm sure there's a number of discussion points on this, so we'll just open it up for general conversation by the Board. So I'll kind of set the stage a little bit. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone that has commented on this particular project. We have gotten a number of comments that have come in from a number of different folks. Some are duplicate, but that is part of that whole process where you want to make sure that items are in fact submitted for, you know, for review by the Board. So the Board has had an opportunity to look at all those comments that have come in. You know, everybody has copies of all of that, so that's good to have that in hand. And I think the, you know, the next discussion now is, is that we're looking to put together that final scoping outline and, and just directing staff, or at least in this case, Mr. Costello has our staff of one to, to work on that. So, we'll just entertain any, any discussion or comments regarding those items that have been submitted.
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, thanks. Just real quickly, Jim, for, you know, moving ahead on the scoping outlines here, what we want to have put into it, you know, I read the emails and the letters that came in that you forwarded to us as Town Board members. I think there was, I think there was five residents that sent in comments to us, and I've always kind of stayed consistent with, you know, really taking a good look at traffic out there in Empire Boulevard. And I'm not going to speak for the rest of the Board, but I think this entire Board has an interest in making sure that the traffic issues are addressed in this document. And so, I think it's imperative that we put in some type of traffic study into this document that can take a look at the issues that have been raised over a period of time pertaining to this project, and certainly the Town Board's interest in looking at, you know, the flow of traffic, both coming in and out of the parcel, and also the flow of traffic going on Empire Boulevard in both directions, obviously with safety in mind. So, with that, I'd like to make sure that this document does include a, you know, a good traffic study that we can take a look at down the road when we start assessing all the information together.
Yeah, and that's, that's in keeping with the DOT. They had submitted two, two documents requesting the Town have the traffic study that was done in 2012 upgraded to reflect the issues associated with this project.
Yeah, in addition to the five residents that sent in comments on this particular project, I know, I think Mr. Frank from the, I know it's Mr. Frank from the Department, State Department of Transportation. What is his position there, do you know?
He's an engineer.
I can't remember, he's an engineer. And then Mr. Garing is the Regional Director.
Yes, he is.
Is that correct? Okay. And then Mr. Shealy, is that...
Mr. Shealy's from the...
D E C. Okay, thank you. So, they also had comments about traffic concerns too, so I think that it's, it's just imperative that we address the traffic issues and the safety of that intersection in our next steps moving forward. So I'd like that to be a part of this next document.
I would support that too. I mean, certainly I acknowledge the DOT's request, but I think even if we did not have the DOT's request, this Board has been consistent, are concerned that we would independently request that. So, I concur with the DOT's recommendation, but also in the lines of what Andy said, that as a Board, I believe, at least as a Board member, I would support that we independently would have moved forward on that anyways.
Yeah, I think the one, the biggest obstacle of any development along Empire Boulevard is, well, not obstacle, but a concern, would be the traffic situation because, you know, we want, we want it to flow well and safely, you know, as much as possible, working with the DOT. They're not always as...
Well, the DOT's asking for an increased traffic state.
It's positive, they say that.
Recognizing that mitigation's going to still be put in as a condition of the approval of the apartment complex, they've got to put that center term in, which they're obviously willing to do.
And then, Jim, the second point that I wanted to mention is, when I'm reading my notes, I think it was Mr. Frank from the State DOT that mentioned a little bit about stormwater protection. And when you, when you look at traffic and you look at streets and so forth, stormwater protection also comes into play. They kind of complement each other. So I think it's also imperative that, in the traffic study, some stormwater protection analysis is done.
That's right, and that was his recommendation, and they will be required, as all developers are, to prepare a stormwater prevention, pollution prevention plan prior to construction.
My understanding is that would be just required protocol.
It is, but it should be addressed in the E I S as well.
Addressing it in the E I S.
All right, so can we make sure that those two elements are put into this document or this request?
Excuse me.
Thank you.
And then just for the Board's awareness, we're doing our, it's actually developed into a semi-annual meeting with the DOT this Friday. So we have a number of items on the agenda. This Empire Boulevard corridor has been one since I've been on as Supervisor that we, you know, always have on the, on the docket for general discussion, what's new, anything like that, and then certainly with regards to this, you know, current application, applications that we have, we'll be talking about that on Friday as, as well as part of our overall discussion.
Thanks.
Okay, all right.
There was some concerns written about historic mitigation, and we've, we understand that Powers and Termini did a look around and found there was no historic artifacts on the area. The Office of Historic Preservation submitted an email expressing that the proposal has no, no concerns for the proposal relating to historic preservation. And regarding the trolley, I know that came up before, back when we were looking at our open space plan, the talk of the trolley, there was a trolley that ran down Empire Boulevard back in the day, but it ran down Empire Boulevard and what was, my understanding, whatever trolley bed there was, was where R G and E has come and totally re-done the property.
There were several, yes, there were several letters that were brought in about the, the aspect of the trolley, the fact that they're on the Seaway Trail. There were some other issues because of, you know, the historic nature of that area with Sal's land and coming through. The big problem is that, number one, we did not identify that in the, in the E A F when we did Parts Two and Three, and we didn't do it for a couple of reasons. Number one, we didn't do it because Powers and Termini did go through the site. Unfortunately, that site was graded out several years ago, both by the applicants, and they were trying to regrade the property, but prior to the applicants going on site, the prior owners actually went in and disturbed the area, the adjacent area to the water's edge. They put a parking lot in there, they dug up a lot of the area. As a matter of fact, some of the area, not in the area where the building is, but further to the east, was actually dug out as a holding area for dredge material, so it could be dewatered prior to it being, being covered over. So, I'm talking to Powers and Termini when they came in, I spent a lot of time with them, they indicated that because of the disrupted area, it had been so torn up, that for them to find anything, you'd have to dig down several feet to get to any area, and even that wouldn't have been virgin area that the Native Americans would have had materials on. So, they were pretty, they were pretty adamant about that. The trolley area, which was brought to, you know, was brought forth as one of the comments, was interesting in the, in the sense that the trolley did go down Empire Boulevard, we've all seen the float bridge trolley line, but that was taken up by the DOT, actually when the trolley was taken out, it became a two-lane highway. And then, of course, back in the late sixties, early seventies, it became a four-lane highway, which was further disrupted. The trolley did at one time meander up through off the right-of-way and then go up through the hill behind DiVincenzo's property. Many, many years ago, the tracks were taken up, the R G and E took an easement over that land. I suspect they probably had an easement along that land when the trolley was going through there.
That's separate property from...
Well, it's part of the 1440 property. That fourteen, that portion of the property's not going to be disturbed as part of the project for the apartment complex, but the problem was that area was disrupted when the R G and E went in and put poles and everything else, and it's what it is. If anything, it'll probably end up, probably be a hiking trail of some type in the future, if anything. In that regard, that's why we didn't spend a lot of time on the historic, historic aspect of the project, because we knew that it had been so disrupted, it just did not, it did not meet the criteria for, for that. I did contact...
It's tainted ground as far as someone trying to study that.
Well, it's just that, when they do these digs, they're actually going down six to eight inches or to a foot or a couple feet to see if they could pick up anything from previous sort of times.
Like the undisturbed, undisturbed land up over by our sewer project.
Right, we have to do that.
That's undisturbed, they would study that.
And that's a very good point, because if, if for some reason, if they start digging and they find something, they have to stop. I mean, it's the state law, you have to stop, and the appropriate officials have to be contacted, and nothing can continue until that's resolved. So, that itself would be, you know, although I suspect, you know, they're not going down, they're not putting a basement in per se, so it's not going to be an issue to go down very far for that building.
So all of this historical data was provided to, or the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation had this as part of their review?
Some of the residents have sent letters on, and they contacted my office, I kind of talked about what the project was and various aspects of it. And I did talk about all the features within the letter, the emails that we received, because they were all good comments. And I got a letter back, or an email back from Nancy Herter stating that they have no interest in pursuing the application.
So the State Office had, at its fourth review, the concerns?
Well, they had, yes, they had the neighbors' comments, and then they contacted me about the neighbors' comments.
They're not just maybe a conclusion based on...
No, I think, I think she was open to everybody's comments. I think that once she found out what the status of the project was and what the details of the site were, it sounded to me like she just wasn't willing to pursue it any further. And I received an email after that indicating that they would not, so.
Okay.
But they were, they were good comments, I think, interesting comments.
One of the, Andy mentioned Scott Shealy earlier, so I guess it's an interesting segue, but Scott works with D E C, and I know D E C's been one of the agencies that sort of talked about, for good or for bad, throughout this entire process. When their comments came in in the middle of March, obviously they were one of the ones I was waiting for. And they mentioned in their comments about the, obviously the proximity to the Eagle's Nest, three hundred and thirty feet, but they sort of talked about just landside in their letter, and I just wanted to bring this up because I asked Jim to reach out to Scott at D E C and confirm whether that three hundred and thirty feet was full circle or water, if they were looking at water different than, than land, and Jim told me that they were, so if you want to just kind of confirm that.
Yeah, after Rob called me, I called Scott. I was a little bit confused when I read, it's number two on his letter, but when you read it, it indicated or it gave the impression that they did not want any activity taking place in terms of the biological study occurring within three hundred feet of the, three hundred and thirty feet of the Eagle's Nest, which was kind of, I was kind of taken aback because the whole purpose of this exercise was to identify and benchmark the aquatic and terrestrial conditions in that area out there to see if there's going to be any degradation or change of the condition. So I called Scott after I talked to Rob, and he indicated to me that anything that they do with on the water surface is fine. They can go right anywhere along the shoreline to do what they have to do for their aquatics. He was more concerned about the fact that if they got out of the boat or if they started walking towards the Eagle's Nest, going up the hill area, that they would be concerned about any type of, you know, nervousness on the Eagle's part and then have a problem. So, my comment to him is, would it be better if, you know, he had no problem staying in the area where the, the marina is and the area immediately adjacent to the marina, but my indication to him was, I feel more comfortable if we were to meet on site, you know, fairly soon to identify the area that they would want us to stay out of. The biologist has been down, down there many times, and he indicated that he really wouldn't have a problem doing what he had to do and not, you know, compromising the Eagle's Nest, but he's more than happy to do whatever the D E C requires in terms of their concerns, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, because what I would, what I would suggest is that prior to, you know, proceeding with any studies, that you, on behalf of the Town Board, meet with the biologist in D E C just to make sure that everyone is on the same page as far as distances, barriers, and whatever else is necessary in that kind of discussion.
And the timing, you know...
Timeline, exactly.
Yeah, I can contact the biologist, I can kind of have the D E C, we can meet on site possibly the last week of April, seeing as to be done.
That's a good idea.
I know that the biologist wants to get a benchmark for this year in April, so he's going to start doing some testing, biological testing in April. So I'm not sure that means anything in terms of, you know, where you are with respect to your resolution, but he will be out doing some initial testing last week of April just to get the process going.
Well, it certainly is the right thing to do. You know, as, as we step through this, it is the right thing to do to gather that information, re-verify, you know, some information that was originally done in that, in that area. So, I think, you know, getting started with that, and I think that clarification was, was a good one, I think. Thank you, Rob, for kind of, you know, picking up on that and kind of pushing the envelope on that a little bit because it was, it was a little, it was a little misleading, and I think at first blush, a little misleading, that, but certainly getting the data within the, that three thirty that was, is in the, what I'll call the waterside versus the landside just seems to make a lot of good, good sense for the project overall.
And to just keep the Department of Environmental Conservation eyes and ears around the project, you know, contemporaneously, and they're there to meet with you and see it through.
Okay, very good. As we take a look at a couple more items that I, that I think that, that are worth a little broader discussion on, there's a comment regarding reduction of buildings from ten to nine that was brought up, and segmentation. And so certainly, we've got the, we've got the apartment complex that we went through and approved now back in 2012. And the, you know, the issue around this application, the dock application, there was a lot of things going on, L W R P and a number of things, and, and so, I don't, I don't see this, this issue, but I, but I, I think it is appropriate for us to take a look at any cumulative impacts as we go through, associated maybe with traffic generation, we've talked a little bit about that, and also stormwater management. So, we've, we've covered both of those earlier, but I think it's just to reinforce that, that cumulative impact. And then on the, on the issue of the ten to nine, you know, I think it, I think it would be appropriate... be appropriate, and I would ask Jim, maybe if you would reach out to the engineer or the applicant for the apartment complex, and we've got a work session coming up on the 30th of this month, and ask, you know, for the applicant, or the applicant's engineer to come in and have some broader discussion, because, you know, going from 10 to nine, if that is in fact the case, you know, that certainly has some, you know, reduction in that area. But before we speculate what all that is or isn't, why don't we, why don't we hear it directly from the horse's mouth? Because I think some of that is part of that cumulative effect, you know, as well, and would be appropriate, you know, for the D I S. So, if we can get them in on the 30th, I think that would be good to have some of that, some of that dialogue, then we know exactly what is or isn't potentially happening.
I think related to this issue, President Ron, was the issue of aesthetics regarding the project, and I, my understanding is that, I think, they've already been addressed in terms of the draft scoping, the issue of aesthetics is already in there.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Trails.
Trails?
There was a concern in our comments, but also even last week, Joe Brennan, the trails committee brought up, that he would like to see accessibility to the water, and that's one of the things that our local waterfront development district is involved.
Got it, thanks.
And it seems to me that we should put it in there, that we encourage the developer to create some pedestrian access to waterfront easements.
Yes, and you had brought this concern up earlier too, and the point you make about the L W R P is a good one, that the primary implementation feature of the L W R P is to get public access to the water's edge. How you do that, you know, that's up to the town to do it, but you should be trying to achieve that wherever possible, and I think you do that, based on the other ones that we've had. Jeff Benway, our town engineer, did, after your last discussion about trails, well, that did talk to Anthony and Danny Daniele about the idea of possibly granting, as a condition of approval, granting easements over the shoreline, so the public can go in there and fish or just watch birds or whatever. Now, that's in addition to the overlook that they're proposing as part of the implementation of L W R P. I think the Daniele's are more willing to do that. They certainly don't, I don't think at this point, kind of want to spend money on board blocks and all that stuff. That's something that we have the L W R P for, to allow us to apply for grant money at some point in time, we would do that, once we can establish what it is we would do down there. But to get the public to the water's edge is the primary focus, and that comment was well-taken and well-observed, and should be addressed as part of it.
I think it should be included, incorporated into the scoping outline.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so if we, you know, if we think about it, this then gives us yet another potential outlet or access point. You know, we've got the sidewalks along Empire Boulevard, and then as, as other things happen, change, develop along there, you can connect, you can connect, you have the connectivity to the sidewalks. There's the internal component that kind of goes up, and I believe it's the Dimaggio property is that next property, where it goes up and loops around, so that, you've got that, but at some point, you've got that potential for interconnectability as well, and then the access at the waterfront.
The one thing they probably should look at as part of the overall, they've got an overall plan, I think, I've worked with the Daniele since we started with Bezos, they were in segments of certain areas they couldn't get to at certain points in time, because they didn't know what they were going to build at the time, but I think there probably should just be an overall hiking plan on the properties to identify where you start, where you end, where you can go and where you can't. Obviously, they probably don't want anybody near the marina, because you've got a lot of activity going on down there, but certainly, I know from the west side of the property, around the back of the restaurant, then further to the east, and then getting into the apartment complex, and then up, it should all tie together, and we should have a.
Well, that's what we talked about as part of that project, approval project for the apartments, was, you know, to continue that connectivity. And I, and I think that just reinforces, you know, what Joe Brennan was saying at Town Board last Wednesday about, you know, don't, don't forget that, you know, and, and I think that that has been a constant, I think, not only for this board, but also planning board on those projects, and that, that ultimate accessibility.
I think the big problem that you run into is, I mean, they're putting sidewalks along Empire Boulevard just for pedestrian access along the boulevard. They did put sidewalks within the project that purpose a lot of it utilized to get the path area up to, towards the Dimaggio property, which eventually we're going to use them over hopefully, and be able to tie it into the parks. But the big problem right now is that the path system that's down there actually goes by the Eagle's Nest, and the D E C's, you know, conscious of the fact that they don't want the public at that location, so the Daniele's aren't going to redirect their paths away from the Eagle's Nest and then get it back into, the only way you can do it is to get it back into the project where the apartments are at this point in time. The other part of that too is they're also donating park land, because the town is part of that project, and that will have access to that land too, so.
It's a cooperative effort.
Good.
How much park land is being donated back to the town?
Either seven or 10 acres.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Seven to 10 acres?
Yeah.
Which just highlights for us that the L W R P, you know, demands that we obviously promote that area, promote that access, and it's our duty to continue to implement it.
Well, when you think about it, the only way you can do the kinds of things, the things that they're asking you to do, is if there's better access to the waterfront, and that's why, and they agree to that, and that's why they're here.
Sure.
All right. You know, as I, as I just scanned down through our, our matrix that we had identified and all the different comments that came in, thank you for that trail, reminded me of that trail, so thank you for that. I think that, those were the, those were the comments that, that either were already included or discussed as part of all the submissions that, that we had. So, you know, the next, the next step is, in the process, would be for a final scoping outline, and I would ask the board, are we, based on everything that we have gathered, things that we have discussed with Mr. Costello, fed back to him, he's fed back to us, we had a point of directing him to put together that final drafting, final scoping outline.
And we review that, right?
Absolutely, yeah. No different, no different than any, any other proposed resolution that might come into, into the board, that he would prepare it, we'd review it, and then, you know, give an indication whether that moves forward or not, or if it needs additional information.
I could take your, your draft document, take your comments that you've given me, incorporate them into another document for your review, if you're happy with it, then we can classify it as a viable outline.
Okay.
If you're happy with it, then we can pass the resolution, so they can start the E I S. Let's do it.
Good. So, everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Horowitz, any, any comments, any feedback from us that, anything that we may have, we may have missed?
No, I think it's been rather exhaustive and complete, and so I commend you for our attention and work in this important area, and look forward to move forward with the scoping outline.
Okay, for the final scoping, okay. Thank you, Jim.
Jim, you've been tremendous as far as feeding to us.
Thank you.
In a timely manner, everything for us, Joe, and you, especially the resident comments.
I will, I will, I will say every once in a while, I'll go up to Jim's desk and say, okay, I think I've got this, you know, and, so we've had a number of offline comments and discussions around this, so just keeping all of the items and not letting anything fall through cracks, so, yeah, and I just want to take a minute to thank the board too. I know that every once in a while, you guys are giving me a little jab about, you know, have we taken care of this, are we looking at that? So, all right, Jim, thank you again for, for that.
And just one last comment for the public's information, the matrix that you prepared will be part of the, of the final outline.
Yes.
So, they can see what the comments were, so everybody knows that the comments came in and addressed them and.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that's, that's great, that's the right, right thing to do, and we keep that, keep that there as part of the overall record, so.
It's that class is airtight, which is important.
Okay, very good. Nothing else on that? That is the end of our action items. We have no additional information items this evening. Is there anything that we need to put on the table that will shut the town down if we don't discuss it between now and the 30th of April, which is our next meeting?
Yeah, I was wondering if you don't mind, if we could hear about where we are with Motz Lane. I mean, that, right now, CP Ward's been out there, working on Penfield Road, and I've gotten people asking me questions about it, and could you, just for that, because that's kind of timely, right now.
As you recall, once we got the last piece of property, last deliver of property from Dr. DePietro that needed to satisfy the requirements of the DOT, one of the things that we did is we sat and took a look at the Motz Lane construction, Ronnie and his team, as well as Jeff Benway, myself, we sat down and we had conversations about how do we execute this, and probably the biggest concern that came up, not for our ability to do that work, the town's ability to do that work, but CP Ward has a lot of larger equipment, more importantly, they've got all of the diverting the traffic equipment, signage, all that stuff that they, that they own, they maintain, that we wouldn't have to rent. So, what we did is we contracted with them to do the curb cut onto 441, and they will essentially kind of set the, set the location of that road in about the first 20 to 30 feet, and then our highway crews will pick up from there, so it'll keep all of our equipment off a busy four-lane highway, keep our people safe. And we will, we will complete the, the lane from where CP Ward drops off, up around and tie into the existing lot behind the Humphrey House, and we've got some work to do with a, kind of a, what I'll call a knee wall or a retaining wall that we'll have. And then we also have a tie-in that we'll do from Dr. DePietro's parking lot right at that end as well. So, CP Ward should be out of there in about two to three weeks. Ashfall plants open up on tomorrow, so that's great news. This will be Ronnie's second job to pick up, that he will do probably just before Memorial Day. And we'll get Baird Road done first, and then we'll do, come down and we'll complete Motz Lane. So, a lot of people are excited.
Yes.
I spoke with, happened to speak with Stephanie, one of the owners of the Humphrey House yesterday, and also a couple of members of the Penfield Business Association, so they're delighted that things are moving forward, so. So, that's where we are. CP Ward should be out by probably before the end of the month.
And I was part of the traffic diversion today, and it was, it was actually, it flowed quickly and nicely there.
Yeah, well, they've done a nice job of really trying to avoid the initial morning traffic and then be clear by before the major evening traffic, so, yeah. And keeps our equipment and our people off, off the road. Not that I want to see CP Ward get hit or anybody hurt there, but it certainly is, they've got a little bit more expertise working on major four-lane roads.
Well, and the signage, as you mentioned, it clearly was a pretty big production, beat into it today.
Okay, yeah, thanks. All right, seeing no business, then we will adjourn the meeting at 8:04 PM. Thank you, Mr. Costello, Mr. Horowitz, Ms. Grosser, thank you very much. Good luck with that pool opening tomorrow.